Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303. It's also online at pennfieldtv.org and social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search for Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and the best part about that is it is free. If anyone wishes to address the board regarding any public hearing matter tonight, there will be public participation opportunities provided following the applicant's presentation and comments, questions from the board. For those of you that are watching the meeting live from somewhere other than town hall, you can participate and give comments or questions by the phone, calling 340-8771, or electronic submission via pennfield.org/. I don't know if that's a backslash or a forward slash, but it's the one that starts here and goes there.
I think that might be a-
It's a forward slash.
Forward slash. Thank you all. Your involvement is valuable, and we certainly encourage any participation in these proceedings. In fact, we'd like to point out, each month, we think the town does a really good job of making sure that people in the community are aware of what's on the agenda so that they know they can come in and give us comments and give us questions, speak their mind about the application. The town does this in a number of ways. One way is the town sends postcards to owners of property that are within a certain number of feet of the subject property. So you actually get a postcard in the mail saying, hey, there's an application for this property. You can call and find out what it's about, and then again, you could email, call, or come in with a comment. The town also posts the agendas on the website, and the town, we've all seen these, the town requires applicants to put up the signs that says this property is under review, call probably 340-8771 for any questions that you may have on it. And again, we certainly can speak on behalf of my fellow board members. We encourage it. It's nice to be able to get all perspectives on an application so that we can do our job and make the right decision. So tonight's meeting, we're first going to tend to our typical business of considering approving the minutes from a prior meeting. Then we go into a work session and take care of any tabled matters, but I don't think we have any tonight. No tabled matters tonight.
For the first time in a year, right?
Yeah, we cleared them out while you weren't here.
Yeah. I missed one meeting and they take care of the whole agenda. That's awesome. Well done. And then we'll launch into tonight's applications, the public hearings. We will ask applicants to come up to a table and give us name and address, and then what we'll do is we'll have a board member walk the applicant through the process. All applicants have submitted a very detailed, comprehensive written application. We've all looked at it. So we've been doing this a while. We can kind of get a sense of what we think the issues are, but every once in a while there's some new issues that pop up. That's fine. But we just find it's more efficient and frankly, a lot of times easier on the applicant when we sort of lead the applicant through the process. So that's what you'll be seeing, and once that's done, we'll invite anybody in the audience, or again, via phone or on the website, to give comments and questions. I think that covers it. And all that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Okay, then let's proceed with the approval of the minutes from the December meeting.
Oh, make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No tabled application, so we'll go right to the public hearings. The first one is the Jackson Road one. So if we may have that read, Andy.
Sarah E. Ward, 1932 Jackson Road, Pennfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 1932 Jackson Road. The properties currently are formally owned by Sarah E. Ward and Susan E. Baldwin Ward and is zoned RA-1-20, SBL number 124.15-1-78. This is application number 23Z-0064.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. All right. Again, if we may have your name and address, even though, probably just read it, but just for the record, and then one of the board members will walk you through this.
I'm Sarah Ward, and I'm at 1932 Jackson Road.
Thank you.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
Thanks for submitting your application. I've had a chance to look over everything. I have a few questions, but maybe before I dive into my question, just at a high level, if you can restate a little bit of the issue, what you're asking for.
So I hired a contractor to build me a shed. I didn't know what the rules were, and I was led to believe that he was taking care of whatever needed to be handled from a town perspective. So it never, it just didn't occur to me that I needed to be aware of that kind of thing. So he built me a shed, and I was told that it was too close.
So the shed is currently there, obviously. What is it being used for?
Like yard stuff and extra storage.
And how long has it actually been there for?
A few months.
Okay. So outside of you hired a contractor, is there any other reason why the contractor put it in this specific location? Is there any environmental concerns? Is the backyard shaped in a way where this is the only place it could go? Or was it just purely a stylistic desire?
I mean, there's kind of a gap in the trees, and the neighbor has fencing that changes in style right behind there, so it seemed like a natural place to put it, but otherwise, no.
Okay. Have you talked to the neighbors that this actually impacts or the property line that it is 90% too close to? Have you talked to them? Have they had any concerns? Have they expressed any issues with where the shed is located?
I have not spoken to them. I just moved in in July, so I really don't know them very well. I know that someone from that property spoke to the contractors because he brought them water, and if concerns were expressed, they were never communicated to me. So other than that, I really don't know, but no, I didn't directly speak to my neighbors about it.
Okay. You know, one of the goals or one of the areas that we look at is the significance or how much of a variance is being requested. 90% or really a one-foot setback is a pretty significant request. You had mentioned in your application, at this point, to move the shed. There would be costs associated with it. Can you just, is it cemented in? How much would it cost to, if you had to move it? Could you quantify what that is?
It's not cemented in. It's on a wood platform. I have no idea how much it would cost to move. I mean, I assume it would have to be disassembled and reassembled, so.
And I don't, I'm not, I asked my board members. I didn't think, I thought you could just shift it, but I'm also not.
Was it a prefabricated shed, or they built it in place?
Built it in place.
Did they dig into the ground to build it?
I wasn't there when it was being built, so.
It looks like it was just sitting on the ground where it could be physically dragged forward possibly. That's the way it appears, just looking at that, because there's no ground disturbed around it either.
Because my concern is if you had come here during the, before this was constructed, I would have probably recommended to not have it where it is and to move it.
I wish I had not put it there.
And so part of it is, I'm trying to quantify how much, because it's such a big request.
Can I throw something out there, too, that we could do? Is, we could also table this for you to get an estimate on how much it would cost to move it. That way you know. Because if it's, if we're talking about $200, it might not even be worth it for you to come back if you just move it to within code. Or if it's $200 and then you find that code says, or that where it is in code you don't like, but you could live with five feet instead of one foot, then that's a completely different situation than you having to deconstruct the entire shed and then move it again.
Yeah, I would also like to request you speak with the neighbor that's on the property line, so we know whether there's an issue or a concern, as long as we're going to table, if we're going to recommend table. It might be a good idea to speak with that neighbor to get their feedback.
Okay.
And I also didn't know if, like, the contractor, have you talked to them and said, hey, you didn't?
Yep.
Was he willing to?
Really not been very helpful about.
Okay. That's not surprising, but I wanted to also just make that suggestion. That's kind of where I was leaning towards, Matt, but that would be my recommendation is to table this and just to really fully understand how much it is, because it's such a big request, and it's probably not something that consistently I would feel comfortable granting if a neighbor of yours had asked for the same kind of variance. And part of what I'm trying to do is be consistent for neighbors in the area, so I would be curious to know how much it would be.
Why, did you select a location, or did your contractor?
I mean, roughly. It seems like a natural place if you're looking at the backyard, just because of the break in the landscape and the way their fence is. I didn't say, put it one foot off the property.
Right.
But.
Okay.
So if it were 10 feet off the property line, would you feel, how would you feel about that, being 10 feet from the property line?
I'm not sure.
Okay. See, a lot of folks come in asking for variances for sheds because the land is sloped and it's natural that it would go there. A lot of folks come in and say, we want it in that location so that we have our yard to use. And to the extent that I move it into the yard, there's less yard for me to use, and that's logical, too.
It would definitely jump into the yard anymore, but.
Yeah, yeah. But definitely Laura's right. It is a significant variance percentage-wise, and that is a factor that we have to consider. You're here for the first time, so some of these questions are like, where are they coming from? But the idea, if you come back next month, it looks like we're going to table this, and you say it's going to cost 5,000 bucks to move this, and there's no guarantee that it won't be damaged, et cetera, et cetera, those are, those will be important factors, at least for me, and probably my fellow board members as well.
Me, too.
Another possibility, if and when you speak with your neighbor, is there anything you can do to buffer? If the concern, if the neighbor has a concern, and the concern is, hey, it's so close, I'm going to see it, can you put up some sort of vegetation to buffer the view a little bit? I don't know, Andy, if there's any indication that this location is any worse or any better than moving it more into compliance in terms of drainage, but.
I don't think that would be impacted by moving it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So that's good. So I think it seems to me to be a reasonable request as well, but I'll just ask if you have anything to add, if we haven't covered stuff.
Just want to clarify, so I'll speak with the neighbors and determine how much it's going to cost to move.
Right. Well, let's find out, because the neighbor may be here. I'll first check.
[laughing]
Yeah, the neighbor won't be able to tell you how much it's going to cost, but if it can be picked up and moved, maybe you get the neighbors to help you do that.
[laughing]
So I don't see anybody that submitted an electronic, you know? And if anybody downstairs knows, I want to make sure I'm doing this right, because it is a new process. And I don't see anybody online on the phone call. So I'll ask, anybody in the audience care to speak about this application? Come on up.
I pulled out one of the slips.
Oh, yeah, it's right here in front of me.
You were so focused on the electronics.
Okay, this is Steve, middle initial E, Spring, from 1036 Wayland Road.
Yeah, go ahead and have a seat.
Come on up, and, by the way, go ahead and sit down, but I'm going to interrupt you before you start and just introduce newly-elected Town Councilman Kevin Berry, who I should have, from the very start, acknowledged your presence. You've been appointed as the Town Board Liaison to this board, and welcome. Nice to have you here.
Nice to see you all. Oh, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spring, sorry about that.
That's quite all right.
Okay.
Do I need to introduce myself and give my address?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I think I did, but sure.
Yeah, I did. I'm Stephen Spring, and I live at 1036 Wayland Road.
Okay.
It's my house right there. And I, as you might guess, I have a view of the structure from my kitchen window, and I was watching it go up over the weeks that it was under construction and thought, that sure looks like a fine shed, and it's beautiful. Nobody's complaining about that. I walked by it today just to get a closer look from the street, and I cannot see how it would be improved with more setback. What that would do is create a 10-foot gap of yard space, which you couldn't do anything with, really. All you have to do is, I don't know, maybe dirt would grow there. I would think that some talking with the neighbor would probably be a good idea, and if they don't, if they did like it, maybe they should be here tonight, but maybe a first offer is to buy them shrubs to hide.
[laughing]
Just one option. I'd be happy to help dig a hole.
I like you, Mr. Spring.
That's a big choice. There's lots of rocks in that dirt. It's not a case of there's any kind of a slope. The whole area is very level. What else was I going to say here? My view is, I don't know why we have the 10-foot setback rule.
I can give you a couple of reasons that I've learned over the years.
Okay.
The experts are over there, and he's an expert, assumed to be, and over there. But one is, we need to leave space to be able to maintain the shed without encroaching on somebody else's property. That's one. So let's say it was right on the property line, and Andres is my neighbor, and I have to go paint the side of my shed, and I'm standing on Andres's property to paint my shed. Seems like, oh, what's the big deal? Well, maybe he hates me, you know? So that's one consideration. The other one is more of a safety consideration, that if we had, let's say, four properties that all met at one particular corner, and everybody had a shed right there, one catches fire, they all can catch fire. So those are, that's what I've been told over the years. Both of those make sense. I don't know if you, a thumbs up? Okay. So those are a couple of reasons. But, on the other hand, I will say, requests for variances from that shed setback are common to this board.
Okay.
So I hear you. And you got a Town Councilman right next to you about, they make the rules, so.
Depending how it goes, we have the rule that fences have to be on the line, and yet you might have to paint the other side of your fence. So that's kind of a contrary thing.
Yeah.
But I don't know. I just think, in the spirit of live and let live, that the variance should be granted.
Well, fantastic. Thanks for coming in.
I don't know the owners yet, and I hope that they can enjoy it for years to come.
Great. All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming here on a snowy night.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, very good. But again, still no calls or e-participation, so we will defer on the environmental seeker action, and I'll entertain a motion to table.
Second.
And just to be clear again, the table is to-
Oh.
I took that as you making the motion. Yeah, we're good.
Is to understand and provide the cost estimates for moving the shed, and then, secondly, the neighboring neighbor to speak with that individual or individuals.
Okay.
And Andy may have some info for you about the neighbor, because my understanding, by the way, is the way we, the town found out about this was a call from a neighbor. So that's probably the person with whom you'd, you know, attempt to speak. Because, you know, there's nothing that says that the neighbor has to talk with you, but you reach out, that's always a good thing to do.
If the neighbor is about to sell their house, does that make a difference?
If the neighbor's going to sell the house? Well, possibly. I guess if I were selling, maybe I'd say it's going to be harder to sell because it's close. Who knows? But I'm not here to make arguments for anyone, sometimes. Okay. Well, thank you very much. There's nobody else in the audience?
Do we need a vote on the table, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was getting to that.
I just did.
All right. So we have a motion to table for the reason stated, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. See you next month.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Who seconded it?
I think Laura did.
George. Give us George. George.
No, I think George first.
George made the motion.
I made the motion, so. So Laura made the second.
Fine, me.
George made the motion? Okay.
Okay.
Just keep you on your toes, Christine.
Next application, please, Andy.
I have this filled out. I watched the video.
Anthony and Cara Galanti, 1437 Plank Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.1-E1K of the code to allow a mini pig rescue and an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a building housing livestock, noxious commodity with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F7 of the code at 1437 Plank Road. The properties currently are formally owned by Anthony J. and Cara Galanti and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 095.04-1-23.2. This is application number 23Z-0065.
Okay. Yes, good to see you again. So again, please give us your names and address for the record.
Sure, it's Anthony Galanti, 1437 Plank Road.
Cara Galanti, 1437 Plank Road.
Okay, thanks. Just so everybody knows, these folks were in September, October, November, something in that timeframe, with a similar application, and decided to retool it, I suppose, after some conversations. And I think it's in a, no, I don't think, I know the application procedurally is in a better spot, let's say, than it was before, so that's good. But before we get into it, I just wanted to make sure that it's, that you folks are clear, and everybody listening is clear, as to the standards that we have to apply in this matter. Because it's unusual, your request for a conditional use permit is unusual in the sense that the proposed use is not one listed in the code that is allowed in the RA, which is your zoning district. Rural agricultural, is that what it is?
Yes.
So typically, the code will say, in rural agricultural district, the following uses are allowed. You know, whatever it is, homes, stores. But then there's a catch-all that says, and any other use that's similar in nature to any of the ones that are actually spelled out. So that's one thing that we have to consider. Is your proposed use similar in nature to any of the delineated ones? The second thing we have to consider is whether the use that you're proposing is consistent and compatible with the purpose of the particular zoning district you're in, which, once again, is rural agriculture. So we have to say, is the use you're proposing consistent with and compatible with a RA zoning? Third thing we have to consider is whether the use is consistent with this comprehensive plan update that the town undertook the last couple of years. And again, all this is because the proposed use is not specifically listed in the code. Not surprisingly, because it's a unique proposed use. So in order to answer those questions, we've asked the staff to render opinions on those factors, whether the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether it's compatible with the RA zoning district, and whether it's similar to any other use that's listed in the code. So we'll be hearing from Andy on that in a few minutes. So again, I just, you're going to get some questions on that, and I wanted to make sure you guys knew, these questions aren't coming out of left field, they're coming out of our code. Okay? Thanks. All right there, George.
Well, again, thanks, thank you for the completeness of the application. It's always appreciated. It's good to see the two of you again. I think we'll go ahead, and Andy, if you could give us the breakdown of the decision-making process and what you determined, and then I think we can commence with questions after that. That make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So I made myself a little cheat sheet here, so if I'm reading, I look like a newsman reading the news, and I apologize for that, but.
Long as it's not Ron Burgundy.
Ooh.
So the first, the first thing that has to be considered is, is the proposed use similar in nature to other listed uses? And staff, myself, has made a determination that it is similar in nature to a listed commercial, or a listed use, which is a commercial horse stable, because obviously both would include the housing, feeding, care of animals. Horse stable would typically include a building for housing the horses, stabling the horses, outdoor pasture area, riding arena, storage of horse trailers, outside employees, people coming and going to ride their horses, that sort of thing. So the proposed use of the pig rescue would be similar in that they're caring for pigs and training pigs.
Not riding pigs, though.
Not riding pigs. There is a building being proposed, so similar to a stable for a horse. They're going to have a fenced area for the pigs to exercise and that sort of thing. My understanding is there's, there could be occasional visits by volunteers and maybe people that are interested in adopting the pigs, which would be, would create some traffic, but would be assumed to be less intense than traffic associated with a horse stapling operation, where you have employees coming and going, people riding their horses coming and going and that sort of thing.
We have teenagers, so it's probably the same as teenagers.
So that basically covers item one. Item two, compatible with the purpose of the district. So the purpose of the district is to assure a proper economic and physical environment for continued agricultural use of land, to maintain an open rural character, to viable agricultural uses, and to assure compatible types and densities of development on lands and adjacent to the Northeast Monroe County Agricultural Use District. So staff's determination, again, is that the proposed use is compatible with this purpose, as pigs are typically considered to be a livestock farm-type animal, which would not be considered out of character with an open rural agricultural district and area. And lastly, as far as consistency with the town's comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is, the purpose is to identify the current condition profile of the community, establish a vision and policy for the future, and implement a plan to achieve this vision. The current plan does not propose any significant changes to existing land use patterns, and recognizes that the town will continue to be a predominantly residential community with a strong- be a predominantly residential community with a strong rural agricultural presence, particularly on the east side of town where the subject property is located. The plan describes the RA2 district as sparsely developed land used for large lot residential vacant crop production or animal raising. The plan also encourages the continuation of open space and agricultural uses within the district. So staff's opinion, again, is that the proposed use of a pig rescue operation is consistent with the purpose and vision identified in the town plan.
Great.
Great.
Thanks.
Excellent. Did you have any questions for what Andy just walked you guys through?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So there were two, so we're clear. There was the conditional use, which we're gonna talk about first, and then the variance that you asked for, for the fence. So let's walk through a couple of questions around the conditional use, so we wanna make sure we're all on the same sheet of music here. So there shouldn't be any change to the ingress or exit...exiting or entering of the property. You won't be adding any additional driveways?
No.
Okay. We talked already about the number of people that would actually be visiting. At this point, we're talking about a person or two that might be volunteering, or somebody that might be coming in to either foster one of the pigs or adopt one of the pigs, so that seems like it wouldn't be anything more than having a couple of friends come over to visit, so I don't really see that as a potential. The impact to the future use of the property, I'm gonna say, I believe there is, because you are putting a structure on it, so that structure would impact the, you know, potential future use of the property, would have to either fit in with that future use or be removed. Compatibility with the general area, personally, because this is rural agricultural, I don't personally see that outside, but I was gonna actually ask some of the members here that are a little more experienced than I am. I don't see that this use would be incompatible with an RA area in the town.
I think with what Andy just outlined, it actually says it's...is in, you know, harmony with it.
Perfect. Gotcha. Will you be putting any signs out that would be indicative? Okay. And then, let's talk a little about the noise level. I have absolutely no knowledge when it comes to pet pigs, so I don't know if they're noisy, or they're like dogs, so...
They're not noisy.
So there's not anticipating any noise coming from the animals, then?
Uh-uh.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. So there is one thing about the generation of the odors. I guess my question is around taking care of the output of the animals, the feces and whatnot, the manure. Is there something in place that you guys have in order to maintain, control, manage, and cut down?
We submitted another letter that outlined the plan for that.
What do you...I'm sorry, George, but why don't you run through what your plan is?
Yep, perfect.
I mean, the letter speaks for itself, but...
So they're basically...so we got the idea from Lollipop Farm, because obviously this is more pigs than we would've had before. They're dumpsters essentially, like very small lined, kind of like the dumpster garbage can you get from, like, wherever you get your garbage delivery from, and they're lined, and they kind of seal better than like a regular garbage, and he's just gonna have to...
Shovel.
Shovel it in there. They do every 48 hours. We'll probably do 24 to 48 hours and just shovel it in there and make sure that it's sealed. And, I mean, I'm gonna live there, we don't want our backyard to smell either. We have a patio and a deck, and we're gonna put in a pool, so we're gonna be closer than our neighbors. Well, we don't...it's not gonna smell.
How often is it gonna be hauled away?
Weekly, like with our garbage.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who calls that? I'm just so curious.
Poop pirates.
This is the poop pirates. It's a service. Okay.
Yeah, there's a whole cottage industry of that.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
I learn something new every day.
Yeah.
So a couple additional questions, then. Exterior lighting on the building, I think we talked about that before. There would be some exterior lighting. Will you also be lighting the pen, and will that lighting be focused so that it is only...we don't wanna make sure you're not impacting your neighbors with the lighting.
Oh, no. No, it's like regular lighting like you would have on a, you know, like on your patio or your deck, or like...
I don't anticipate having to light the southern portion of the building. Maybe the east where the door is and...
Yep, on the east only, okay.
But it went like pretty outdoor.
Back to the dumpsters, I'm sorry, I'm just so fixated on this. Where on the property will they specifically go? I'm just...
To the west side of the building.
There's a map that shows the...if you go...in the application, there was, yeah, that was the...
That's the building, but...
Yeah, that's not to scale, obviously, but yet more towards the west side, because on the west, the property located directly to the west of us, that is...that whole back area is a raised septic bed, because it's a group home. So there's nothing there, like there's no...it's not facing any house. The group home sits actually ahead of ours, as you can see there. But all that open area, it's raised septic.
No, she's saying where would the...
And then the dumpster, so the building's gonna go in the back there?
Yeah, the building's gonna go more towards the east. I mean, it's not much more to the east, and then the fence and stuff will be towards the west, nothing in the back of it.
And then the dumpsters will go next to the building?
Mm-hmm.
How are you...I'm so fixated. Then you wheel the dumpsters to the driveway?
Oh, no. A little driving, like a...what's the driving thing?
Like a gator?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just logistically need to understand that feels like a lot of...
Yeah.
Understood.
What if it spills over? I mean, it doesn't...
Yeah. So the proposed hours of operation, where you would actually have folks coming and going that would be either volunteering or considering adoption?
We very, very rarely would have volunteers. We have a big family, we like to do it ourselves. So I don't really...I mean, maybe volunteers once in a while, but, I mean, when people would come to visit, maybe...
So no scheduled hours of operations?
No.
Okay. Gotcha. And then, one of the things that we did talk about before was perhaps along the property line where the building was going to go, talking to your neighbor, putting out some kind of buffering, like some trees or some hedges or something?
There's already trees on the east portion of it, along with the creek.
Okay.
And it's gonna be...there's...it's not shown on this photo, but where that white square is to the neighbor to the east, there's now...he has a building there now, and it would be parallel to his building.
Gotcha. Okay. So that covers all the questions that I had and that we normally cover. Does anybody else on the board have some questions for...
Yeah, I do, but I'll defer to anyone.
You go ahead.
So first one is actually for Andy or Phil. Are we aware of any horse stable operations that are in RA2 districts?
There has to be, right?
Yeah, there are. I can't, right off the top of my head, name them, but...
There's one in Harris Road, not too far.
Plank Road, across from Yergine East Station, to the west of 250.
Yeah. I just wanna, you know, put that in the record that there are...
Yep.
Okay. So the use that you've opined is similar to the proposed use, has been allowed and is allowed by code, but in fact, it's also...there are ongoing operations.
Yeah.
So occasionally, if not all the time, with those requests, don't we put a time limit on it for, like, renewal of the request?
That was one of my questions.
That was one of mine.
Yeah. See, great minds think alike up here.
I don't believe it's a requirement of the code to do that.
No, not a requirement, but historically, we've...what I'm getting at is historically, with horse stable requests, we've said, "Okay, we're gonna give you five years," just to sort of monitor, make sure that there aren't issues. And I don't recall ever having a situation where somebody came in and requested a renewal where we denied it, because to me, that's a sort of...it allows the...these folks, the town, to keep an eye on operations, to see... because neighbors change, people move, new people move in. So one neighbor that's here now may say, "I double thumbs up to this," but somebody else coming in may not like, may think the smell is too much, whatever the case may be. So, you know, assuming that that sort of condition is appropriate from council's perspective, that's certainly something that we can consider here. Another question that I have is, you're proposing to dispose of the pig droppings weekly. Could you do that more frequently?
Probably.
Probably, yeah, if we needed to, sure.
Okay. And then, what mechanism or process will be in place to make sure that the pigs don't escape or leave your property?
Pig panels. You have a...
Yeah, it was also in the letter, the...
Right.
Just read the...
They've designed four pigs, they've five...four and five gates steel wires, so they can't...you know, their noses are very strong, they can lift things, they will be able to lift it or bend it or anything like that.
Okay, good, because that is something that I know is...always comes up with the horse. You know, they have the fences with the wire in them that they use nowadays and stuff.
So basically, we need it to be pig-proof?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's one way of putting it, I guess, yeah. Okay, I don't have any more questions.
So do we determine the number of years we would recommend as a condition for the renewal?
Not yet, but we can certainly talk about that.
And I think in the past, when we've done something like that, we've allowed staff the opportunity to bring it back in X point, and then if there's no issues, they wouldn't even bring it back to us. I think that's happened, too, on other cases where we've had points where, you know, we said, "Okay, we'll give you a temporary," or, you know, "We'll revisit this in so long." If the town has heard complaints and things like that, that gives the staff the opportunity to bring it back to us then at that point.
Or even sooner.
Right. And if not, then we just...everything's good.
Yeah.
So how would that, again, how would...as a condition, would that be a renewal?
Yeah.
I think the ability to revoke it isn't a condition, that's in any condition of use.
Absolutely true.
We can hold a hearing and revoke it if necessary.
Yep. That's always present. You're correct on that. All right. I don't see anybody that's in queue on the phone, and once again, I don't see any electronic submissions, so I will ask anyone in the audience that cares to speak, come on up, sir. How are you? We saw you last time, I think.
Fresh off a coyote...coyote kill last time.
My name is Fred Lair. I live at 1440 Allen Road, and I represent all of Allen Road. I have a question about the horse facilities that you said were in the neighborhood. Were they on five acres?
There...well, there's a requirement that you have a minimum of five acres to have a horse stable.
Okay. They're not on...they're only on five acres?
Yeah, they are five acres, so they meet the minimum.
You just told me 10.
No, no, the horse farm, the one, the horse farm happens to be on 10.
You only need five acres to have a horse?
Yeah, right.
Okay. The other question I had, I was, like Laura, I was kinda confused about the dumpster.
Yeah, it's important.
You're gonna put the manure in the dumpster, and then you're gonna have the dumpster people come and get it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Also, can't see on the diagram very good, Tony, but where your pine trees are on the west side of your house?
On the west side of my...yes.
Is the barn gonna be in front of that?
The barn?
Yeah.
No. Do you have the other picture with the yellow box on the...
Yeah.
No, it's gonna be parallel with Ivans on the...in the back.
So it'd be on my side of the pine...of your pine trees? I can't see that very good.
Yeah. So...so you know that, like, pergola-type thing?
Yes, yes.
It's gonna be...
That blew down? Yeah. That one?
Oh, no, that's the...that's the chicken. Yeah, that's another story. It's gonna be back behind the pergola. Right...there's a swale that runs behind that.
So I'll be looking right at it.
Yeah, yeah. But it's over...it's...I think it's 150, 175 feet off the back line.
Yeah. I guess that's all I have. The other one concern we did have is whenever you have...whatever feed you're going to feed the pigs, there's always a rat problem in the barn, and we were kinda concerned about that.
Yeah, and as far as the food goes, they're in sealed containers for livestock.
Maybe a barn cat or two?
Yeah, that's in our plan as well.
And birth control. So I called Lollipop Farm after the last meeting, because that was one of the concerns, and they said what they do is they put out mouse and rat food with birth control in it, because they said it's actually not the problem of the rodents getting in, is that they reproduce at such a rapid rate.
Right.
So they said that you have to put...I know. You have to put the food out and put birth control in, which he just ordered.
Okay. That's the one I never heard of.
I know, but it came from Lollipop Farm, so...
I'm surprised we haven't seen TV commercials for that.
I'm out, it's great. Yeah, so I guess...
I was just gonna say something.
Yeah, so I guess if that's what Lollipop Farm does, then it's gotta be the right thing, so...
So I've actually captured then as a couple of conditions, that the food will be kept in sealed containers at all times reduced, and that you will be leveraging birth control management for the mice.
Yes.
And I would also...shall I mark down barn cats, or are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all good ideas. Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Well, again, you've come here twice now, so thank you for both occasions. Anybody else in the audience? Whoever wants to come up next?
Thank you. Scott Allen, 1450 Allen Road. I'm just kinda confused about everybody in these variances. I mean, everybody wants to build a house, they got setbacks, you gotta be from the property line.
Right.
Why should anybody that's gonna be building, like the horse farm on Plank Road, gotta have five acres, you gotta have a legitimate setback, if you ain't to right distance, you shouldn't be granted one to gain a couple distances closer to the line than this other person that did all the right allegations first. So I don't see where that's fair to other people that had to do that to begin with. I mean, if you got the property, put it where it's supposed to be, cotton dry. If you don't let...if you can't do that, well, then you're gonna have to find someplace else to put it, I mean. Then something else with like the smell issue or anything like that, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Doesn't matter, but it's gonna...it's gonna be around. It's like landfill, you can smell a landfill from airport at our house, but that's...main thing is, I think, if you got regulations for the town to build a house, you gotta have, maintain that setback. You gotta maintain your distance from the property lines. Everybody wants to build all this stuff, this has happened next to me already. People building big pole barns, next thing you know, they got construction companies, construction equipment coming in and out, trucks at night, eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night dumping. Two people just did it, and I got the addresses here on my side of the road, and it's like, how much work can we take? It's supposed to be residential agriculture. If you can farm, you can farm right up to the property line, but not raising livestock. The guy that's got, like I just said, the horse farm down the street, he maintains his distance because he wanted to have it. So now, how fair is it for him that somebody else can get away with doing a variance? I mean, I don't understand that.
Yeah, well, I can address that. Generally speaking, that you're right, the law, the town code sets up rules about setbacks. However, the law also sets up zoning boards of appeals, so that people, property owners, have the right to come in and request relief from the zoning code. Request it. Doesn't mean it has to be granted. This board does deny requests. But they have to...they have to prove their case, just like every applicant has to prove the case. So the law sort of supports both ways. We have a code, but there is a process to allow exceptions to the code under appropriate circumstances. And again, that's why these boards are put together to consider those applications. So it's a fair point taken, because many, if not most, people, when they build things, do comply, because they're able to comply. But, you know, we can get into reasons why the building needs to go where it's going to go. I think we did last time, but we'll reiterate those tonight. But again, you know, they're...it's with...they're within the right to come in and ask for the variance.
I understand that.
And it's our...yeah.
It's not...I don't understand it either, but it's not fair to understand, that's my point, because I had to go through it. And why would you, if you don't want to go through the hassle of everything, do what the town requires and move on, or instead of trying to...
Sure.
...back on the neighbor's property, deal with it?
Understand.
I mean, that's my point of view.
Okay.
All the other issues that were brought up from the neighbors, too, are... All the other issues that were brought up from the neighbors too, are substantial, like the smell and all that stuff. It's farmland, so you're going to, you smell it all the time, but it's, it's a little, I just think that the regulations to build this big bull barn and agricultural livestock should stay as what it's supposed to be, not give them maybe 10 or 20 feet. It's unfair to the other neighbors that have to do the same thing and comply with it. Plus, you got the house to the west, I mean, I don't know if anybody comes there, it's like a group home, it's going to be, I mean, they're going to always, I don't know if you guys understand what group home, our people go there and live there, get, need help, to get taken care of.
Sure.
I mean, they're not going to want to deal with that, I mean, I'm just being fair and honest, because I've lived there for 60 years now, my ancestors lived there, so it used to be, farm is one thing, but when you start raising livestock and encroaching on people's property, it's going to mean, where's a little bit more respect coming, you know what I mean? Follow the town's guidelines, if you can't meet them, I mean, everybody tries to get what they can get, but it's not fair to the next person to, I don't, I'm not a fan of it, so that's my point.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate you coming in and letting us know.
Because that just escalates, like the same thing next to me, and you got trucks at night and all the other stuff.
Right, right. Okay, well, if you're, if you're aware of some specific, and it sounds like you are, because you got a little sticky in your hand, I...
I got pictures.
I'd, I certainly advise you to speak with these folks, and I assure you, they'll look into, and if they find that something's violating the code, we'll, we'll do what we can stop.
If you, I'm sorry, if you agree to let them put the barn up within, closer than what the setbacks are, then how can you can't go back against them and have them move it, can you? If you guys agree it and they give them the variance?
Short answer is no, unless, unless there's some conditions that they're violating. For instance, you've heard us talk about making sure they, they have the, the droppings hauled away every, let's say, every five days, and if it turns out, we hear from you folks saying, hey, they're not doing it, they'll be back right in here.
Well, that's, I mean, I don't even, you can't really tell, they don't really, I can't see nothing where like, they're going to have like a location where they're going to have it, you're going to have it have the accessibility, when it's wet out, how the truck's going to get to it.
He's, he's hauling it out, if I understood correctly, so the trucks are going to be out in the road, he's taking it like he, like he's going to take their, their, you know, down the driveway to the end of the road, wherever their hauler picks up their trash and they're recycling. So that will, that onus is going to be on them to, unless they hire somebody to do it, but the onus is going to be on them ultimately to do it, and again, your presence here tonight is probably striking home a point that they realize that people are going to be watching, which is fine and fair, but I certainly understand your concern about the setback. I, I kind of disagree with some of the things that you're saying about the use, because it is an agricultural district, and the comprehensive plan talks about, you know, animal raising.
Yeah, so, and I can tell you, I was on that board, and that was absolutely the intention that, for that area, yeah.
I understand that, but if you got, it's okay, they got the property for the, put the barn up, well, good, let them put it up, but put it where it's supposed to be, not give them an extra 10 or, I don't know, 10 feet towards somebody else's property line.
So why don't you hold that point for a second, stay where you are, and let's ask you, that's a fair question, why can't the barn be built within the appropriate setback?
So it's, it's really an aesthetic thing. If you look at how narrow our lot is, 100 feet off of each east and west point is pretty much dead center. So we're asking for 25 feet closer to the east property line, which, if you're standing in my backyard, it's raised up a little bit already, there's, there's trees all, you know, between the two lot lines and then a creek on the other side, so, and then it just makes it less expensive to run a stone driveway or a regular driveway out to that barn, to be able to get in and out when it's muddy and such.
Okay, so I guess stated another way, it's, it's not as feasible to put the barn in an area that it would be compliant because of cost and operations as well.
Can I, what's the whole build going to cost you?
About $190.
Yeah, depending on if we go with the whole package, if we wanted to do insulation and all that other stuff.
You know, we haven't even finalized utilities, the plumbing, the electrical, or whatever.
And how much would it cost extra to put it within code?
With the extra land prep and stuff like that, we got an estimate of about $5,000 for the stone, because you have to bring in, obviously, 25 feet by whatever width of more stone to move it further to the center.
So I'm going to tell you, I'm undecided on, on the 25-foot variance, and one of the things that I'm taking into account is that that variance runs with the land, so it's not just if, if pigs on plank runs, or it comes in, it's if cows on plank come, or horses, or I guess horses wouldn't count, somebody else on plank, ostriches on plank comes in, then that variance remains. So that, that's my, and I'm hearing that it's 190-plus thousand dollar project, and it's cost $5,000 to, more to put it into code.
Honestly, for me, it's not that, it's just ugly.
But, but listen, listen, listen to all these neighbors who are, who are now here complaining because, because they now are going to be looking out their back door and seeing this building that wasn't there, and they're going to think that it's ugly if it's 25 feet or, or not.
Right, yeah.
All right, so, and, and, so these are the things that I'm taking into account, because I just, I personally don't think that a $5,000 expense extra on 190-plus thousand dollar project is...
Oh, I don't care about the $5,000, I'm just saying like...
So that, that's where I come down on this variance, that's, that's my problem with it.
And I think if we, if we, and I, I'm sorry, I forgot your, your name, sir.
Don Allen.
Don, if, if by putting it in the center of the property, you have completely eliminated Don's concern, which is you being given a variance, because at that point, you're no longer being given a variance, you are within code when it comes to the structure itself placed in there, and that would eliminate, at least your primary concern, which is giving them a variance.
Yes, and I guess it is, it's, I mean...
I'm just repeating back what you said, I want to make sure we're clear, that if they were to put it within the center of the property, so that it met the code on either side, your disagreement on the variance goes away.
That's what I agree on, yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Things should be where they're supposed to be, not favor this person, the other guy who wants to build a horse barn.
Well, I just feel like I'm raising the property value in Penfield. My taxes are going to go up significantly when I build this, it's going to make, it's, you know, it's going to put more taxes into Penfield, someone was saying they're worried about me decreasing the property value, I feel like I'm increasing the property value, and, you know, if something happens, obviously, we don't ever plan on selling this house, but I'm just saying if, you know, we, we sell this house and someone isn't going to have pigs back there anymore, and they want this really cool-looking barn to do whatever, they're going to look out and say, oh, what a nice backyard, but it's smack dab in the middle of the, of the yard, it just, aesthetically, it's not as pleasing if it was over just a little bit.
Yeah, that's understood, but I'm not sure how strong an argument it is in favor of a variance, because like we were talking about in the prior application, everybody wants the shed out of the way.
Right.
So they can use their yard more. But if it can be moved four feet, three feet, just like if your barn can be moved five feet to reduce the size of the variance, you know, we often explore that with applicants as well.
And the difference between the shed and this one is, right now, we're talking about noxious odors too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the reason for, a reason for this setback requirement, I'm assuming it has to do with the generation of the, of the odors.
Yep, that's, that's why it's required to be 100 feet.
So, given that, honestly, I'm not quite sure how, how big a difference 25 feet is going to make, but the code is what the code is.
Yeah.
So I get that. Okay, anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
What about the other people that, if you're, that live behind them, where they got the barn, they got houses now, if they move, they retire, they pass away, move, somebody's going to want to go buy that house, and they see the big barn in the back, at your property that you think is okay, they're going to, it's going to lower the value of somebody else's house for sale, resale.
But, but...
The size, the, the size is not an issue.
Yeah, the building size is not an issue, the placement is what we're talking about, sir, so we're clear.
Not the size of it, but the...
Yeah, where it's located.
The location of it.
Yeah, that, that's, again, a veil of concern, we hear that frequently, one response is, nobody's forced to buy.
Yeah.
So I'm look, thinking about buying this house, and I see, geez, right next door, there's a, a cell phone tower. Man, oh, yeah, that looks like pig droppings, but I'm not going to sign that contract unless I can live with the fact that I'm going to be moving right next to a cell tower, same thing. Anybody buying the house will see the barn.
Yeah, so, so to the, the point about the variance, have you spoken to the group home that would be most impacted by this?
It's the other side.
Oh, it's the other side, okay.
Yes.
And, and that neighbor has, has expressed concern of the 25 percent of the feet?
No, and it would actually be...
It'd be parallel with his building.
Yeah, no, I got that, I'm just saying that, and do you have any doc, I don't remember if there was any documentation from, from that neighbor indicating they had no concerns with the variance request?
No, he said he would do it, but he didn't bring it over.
Gotcha, so that would be very helpful to have that, if, because the neighbor impact, it says, I don't care, that, that comes into play a lot for, at least for my decision-making, yeah.
I can get that for you tomorrow, he's already agreed to write a letter on our behalf, so...
Andy, which, okay, so you folks both live to the, to the south?
South.
Okay, how much distance is there between the back of the proposed barn and your southern, southern property line?
Well, more importantly, is it within code?
Yeah, it's, it's over, it's over 100 feet.
If it's within code, it doesn't matter.
I, I want to say it's closer to 150 feet.
And right where that cursor is, was, where the cursor was, you know, what I'm thinking now, is there, is there any thought about putting buffering back there, so that...
Oh, you were already going to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was, when they clear out the area...
Yeah.
And put, like a berm towards, towards the back, towards the south side.
Okay, so the view of the barn...
And there's pine trees there.
Right, would be, would be somewhat shielded from neighbors to the south from that, okay. All right.
So we're talking about for that, for the, for the, the placement variance, they would want to put buffer, additional buffering?
Well, it's, I, I don't, since there's not a variance request to the southern line, no is the answer, but just in considering the conditional use permit, you know, buffering from the barn is, I think, a fair condition for us to place on that. I am wondering about if, if you folks have had enough time to consider whether you would voluntarily reduce the size of your variance request, or if you want more time to think about that.
I mean, in all honesty, if you're standing in the backyard facing east, I mean, there's, and I've had several conversations with my neighbor, been over to his property, talked back and forth, I mean, 25 feet, I don't believe is anything that's out of the realm of...
It's not that much, basically.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's, I don't think it's a huge deal, and if you're standing in my backyard, you would, you would see exactly what I'm talking about, because thickness of the trees, and the, you know, there's a natural buffer there already.
Right, right, I, and I heard you say that he said he was going to send it, but he hasn't sent it, but it'd be nice to have that in the record as well, so, in any event. Okay, any, any other concerns? All right, well, I think we had somebody else in the audience that wanted to speak, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dan, did we get an answer, did you answer as to whether you would consider giving up the 25?
I would say I'd give it up to you to decide whether or not 25 feet is acceptable or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody else want to speak? Oh, I thought you had your hand up before.
I can hear it sound.
All right, fair enough, fair enough.
I do have a quick one.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Davis, 1450 Allen Road. Quick question, these little creatures, okay, they're going to be fenced in, okay, how high is the fence, is it, and then is it covered over the top?
It's not covered over the top, I don't know.
Aren't you worried about the coyote dogs? We have them, we have 33 dogs about on our street, that's about what we have.
No, we've been there seven years, and we've never been without pigs there.
Okay, yeah, I know, I've, I've seen your pigs.
Yeah, no, um...
But you're not worried about the coyote dogs?
No.
No.
Okay, and this isn't going to draw the coy, I mean, we have them, as you guys know, we've got coyote, and they, you can hear them at night, and is this going to draw more than we have now?
No, I mean, we've...
A biologist?
This is, this is the only time that we've ever had no pigs outside, was, this is the first...
Those pigs were big, I don't think a coyote dog is going to...
Maybe two, two mu, well, they, they do get big.
Oh, I know, I saw them, they're huge.
Yeah, so we have the little, little ones mostly inside, and the big ones go outside, but the little ones will be inside the barn, because they can't be outside until they're bigger, so I really don't think so, I think, although the coyotes do come up to the big ones, I mean, they, you know, so I think everything will remain the same, I don't think we're going to change very much.
So nothing's going to increase with them coming over more, because you have this nice little piece of meat over there?
No, I don't think so, I really don't.
And you had specified last time, I think you were here, and I just cannot remember, how many pigs do you anticipate on property?
Probably 20, according to Lollipop Farm, with the amount of space we have, we could have up to 35, but I don't, I don't want that many, I think probably 20 is my max.
And you have had pigs there, how, what's the most number of pigs that you've had?
Uh, maybe 10, probably 10, between, between inside and outside?
Seven or eight.
Oh, only eight.
Do we want to put a condition where we would ask you to limit it to 20?
Yeah, we could do that.
I'm not, I'm not a person...
I'm running out of room on your sheet, you need to make sheets bigger.
Yeah, we could limit to 20.
I mean, that may just, it's not...
Oh, I'm kidding.
Lollipop Farm, you're not recreating Lollipop Farm, I guess.
Right, yeah.
So there's no breeding, right?
Oh, my God.
Okay.
No, this is the opposite of that, this is a rescue, no.
Good, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Anyone else in the audience?
So, Dan, I do need to run through the rest of the 25-foot variance questions real quick?
Sure.
I don't really see this as being an undesirable change to the neighborhood by the variance.
Yeah, it's more the conditional use, I kind of agree with that.
Can the benefit be sought by applicant, even by other method? Technically, you could move the building 25 feet to remove the variance, so I'm going to have to say, yes, you could. The question about whether or not this is substantial, you're at about 25 percent, if we're saying it's 100-foot variance, and, and you're asking for a 25-foot, that would be, my math is right, Laura, right?
You're right, that's right.
Would be, would be 25 percent, I don't know why we consider that substantial, but it is a decent amount. Yes, no? I'm asking the more experienced guys, would 25 percent be considered substantial?
It's right on the cusp of where I'm sitting.
Okay.
You know, so what he's doing now is going through the legal standards that we each have to go through in our mind, deciding whether or not to grant the variance, we had, these standards apply to every variance request, and it's a balancing test, so there are five standards, we could say, they lose on four of them, but they win on one, and given the balancing of all of them, we still going to vote in favor of the application. I'm not saying that's what we're doing here, but that's the process that he's going through, is the law requires us to consider each of these factors.
Gotcha, so the two other questions that we have, that I have, is, is self-created, yes, because of the placement for aesthetics, so...
Right.
And the, the final question is, will the proposal have an adverse effect of the physical environment conditions of the neighborhood? I don't think that it would.
I could, I'm also on the fence on this, because it's not the same as a shed, it's not, and it's, the 100 feet and the standard is set much more than a shed is because of the nature, and I'd be really curious, have we ever granted a variance for a stable or a horse barn? You could argue that maybe 10-foot setback is not necessary in some places. This is not because of needing to paint the barn, this is really to protect the neighborhood from livestock. I mean, we're talking about livestock that's going in a backyard, and I, I get the, the conditional use, and it's what the nature is, but I, I do struggle with making an exception on the, the setback. Personally, I'm just, I'm struggling.
So, you asked whether or not we'd ever granted a similar variance for a horse stable. I don't know the answer to that question, but if the answer were yes...
I'd be more open to making an exception here, because, again, you're dealing with livestock.
No, I get it, so, so let me suggest this. First of all, let me just ask you, if the variance is denied, is it, but the conditional use permit is granted, is it your intent to move forward with the project?
Probably.
Yeah.
Can you guys, we need you guys to be in unison, either, we need a yes or a no on the...
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I go back to the, the layout of the lot, and the width, and addressing your concern with, yes, it's livestock, but they're on, outside of that building, they're going to be on the west side, not, not closer to...
I get it.
You know what I'm saying?
I do, yeah.
They'll be, they're not going to be on the east side of the building, they're going to be on the west side.
Okay, he's saying, so the barn will be on this side, where, where we want the variance, but their fence will be on the other side, so they won't actually...
So the outdoor proportion is actually centered in the yard, where the indoor section is slightly offset?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so it'll be like, it'll be the driveway with the barn over here, and then the whole fenced area is actually all in the yard.
So the livestock itself will be 100 feet from the property line?
Correct.
Correct.
It'll only be the barn that's actually...
Yeah, the physical barn will be closer to the east.
Yeah.
So by placing it where they are, the fenced-in area is centered in the yard, but the indoor section is offset?
But 50, but 50 years from now, what's the person that's going to putting ostriches in, what are they going to do?
Yeah.
I mean, I would like that.
Yeah, ostrich, they make great...
Okay. And, and I don't know whether we can readily ascertain the answer to Laura's question about whether we've granted, maybe a no, for horse...
I could do some research and find out.
Yeah, so...
So I, I guess I'm going to ask Anthony directly, if, if we say to you, conditional is granted, the other is not, you would still, will you still move forward with the project?
I mean, basically, we wouldn't have a choice, I guess, so that's why I just ask that you consider what we've, what we've spoken about and make a decision.
Okay, so, so, but, agreed, agreed, I'm just, we're just, the reason we're asking the question is, is that if we, it would change our approach to tabling to get additional information, at least in my mind, from Andy, versus saying, if you said yes, and we're going to move forward regardless of whether you give this or not, then we could vote directly tonight, right?
Well, I think what he's saying is, he really, really, really wants 25 feet, and if we deny it...
No, he's saying, if you want to come back.
He's forced to still build it, but he's not going to be happy about it.
Right, so if we voted on the conditional use permit tonight, and we tabled the variance request, why would we do that? One, this is me, get that letter from your neighbor.
Yep.
That's one. Two, allow Andy to do research to see if we've granted similar variances for horse stables, because we are supposed to try to be consistent in our, in our rulings, and then, you know, maybe, you've already indicated about the buffering to the south, so I don't think we need you to, so, you know, if, if, if you're, if you don't want to do, get, try to get that letter...
I can get, I could put them on the phone, I mean, I could do...
Would the letter make a difference?
Would it make a difference? He's nodding.
It would for me.
So, I, I don't think it can hurt, and it's, it's going to, you know, it's going to cost you a month.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if you're talking about 50 years from now, that letter doesn't matter, because Ivan's not going to live there in 50 years.
I don't, I don't want to speak for the other board members, but for myself, that letter from that neighbor that's going to be most impacted by this telling us, I don't bo, this doesn't bother me, that would impact my decision-making, absolutely.
And then it also, honestly, the month would give you a little more time to think whether you can live with a, you know, a 20-foot request or a 50, because another rule is we are supposed to grant the minimum variance that would accomplish the purpose, so, and it's not to minimize your aesthetic, I mean, it's a beautiful area, and everything, you know, beautiful home, all that stuff, so you're within your right to say, we want it to look nice, but, and not, not, not attempting to twist any arms either, if your position is, the request is what the request is, go ahead and vote tonight, you know, then we can still table it, but, you know, I, I don't know that we would do that, so. Let me just ask if there's anyone else in the audience that cares to speak about this? No? Okay. So, while they're thinking about that, let's move forward with the environmental?
Yeah, sure, in regards to seeker, I had a question for Andy, this is not really a type 2, is it, I mean, because of the environmental, and because of the...
It's a type 2.
It is a type 2?
Yeah, type 1.
Okay, all right, so is a type 2 requiring no additional consideration?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by George to declare the type 2 action under seeker, a second by Laura, any further discussion on that? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, let's deal with the conditional use permit first.
Gotcha, so I would recommend that, based on the information provided tonight, based on the information that Andy has given us regarding the town staff's review of the, of the, of the request, along with the conditions that they have agreed to, which I've outlined here, which are limited to the renewal every five years, that the, the, the town will monitor and possibly revoke if necessary, keep, keep the food stored in sealed containers, birth control management for the mice and the rats, keep the, applying some barn cats, number to be determined, and buffering in the rear to reduce the, the view and the noise, and then limited to 20 animals at any given time.
I'd probably recommend one more, is that they provide documentation of their waste removal service, just, just provide that contract or whatever they have, that way it's on record that it is being hauled away.
Provide waste management...
How often?
I guess for the term of the con, I mean, if it's...
How, like, weekly?
The frequency, you mean?
Is that what you mean?
How often do they have to provide?
I think that, well, whatever the term of their agreement is, so if they have a 10-year agreement with this hauler, then I guess I would say...
Yeah, as far as...
It's the duration of the contracts, if it's yearly, then I guess I would say, would that make sense at all?
Oh, I, I thought you meant that every week they have to send notice that it got picked up this week.
Oh, no, 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 no. I think more, they're, just, just a service agreement saying that this company is taking, you know, is handling this, and it's once a week, and it's...
Just, just proof of, what did you call the company's name, I'm sorry?
Poop Pirates.
That the poop pirates have been engaged, and you'll be using them.
Yeah, you'll, you know, so maybe if you have a written contract with them, or they agree that they're going to come weekly, or twice a week...
Yep, so, so based on those, those conditions, with the understanding this is self-created, I would, I would recommend approval of the condition.
I think the only modification of the conditions I would want is that with the cats, I don't, the number to be determined, I think it needs to be just at least one.
You got it.
Yes, counsel.
And Andy, I apologize for the hieroglyphics up front.
We'll figure it out, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the request for a conditional use permit with several conditions as stated. I would add that if it's okay with counsel, that we adopt the findings and recommendations of staff in the memo, as well.
Yes, I just, maybe I missed it, the condition on the number of pigs?
He said 20.
Twenty, no more than 20. Okay, so we have that motion to approve with conditions, and did we get a second?
Second.
Second by Andres, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, so, we're, to the variance, you folks have a desire on that, you want us to move forward with it tonight? We're prepared to do so.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that's going to change really is the letter from the neighbor, and, you know, not under oath, but I can tell you he's going to write it.
Yeah.
So take it for what it's worth, you know, in that aspect, I mean, that's really the only thing of substance that you, that you requested, so...
Well, and, and Andy's researched that if we've granted a 25-foot or similar variance in the past, that would certainly weigh very heavily...
That's going to be on him to do in the next month. If, if there are four horse operations in a district, and each one of them has a variance similar to what you're requesting, that's going to be, that's going to weigh in your favor as well.
Absolutely.
Now, there may be none, there may have been four that were denied, I don't know, but he doesn't know either, he's got to research that. And then, of course, it gives you the month to think about whether you're willing to reduce the request as well, but I, again, no arm twisting there, so. Again, we're...
Let's go back next one.
And if you want to take a few minutes to go outside and talk, we can proceed to the next one.
It's been six months already.
Yeah.
Wrote out another month.
Yes, there you go.
So then I would, I would then recommend that we table the...
Table the request for the variance, for the reasons stated.
For the reasons stated.
All right, I'll second that.
And, and just to be clear, that seeker was, was just for the conditional use, not for the variance itself, or was that for both?
I think seeker's for everything.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion to table for the reasons stated, I have seconded that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, on the conditional use, we put in five years, right?
I did, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good work, let's go to the next one, please, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel A. Clark, 10 Golden Chain Court, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code, to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required, under Section 250-5.4-C3D of the code, at 10 Gold, Golden Chain Court. The properties currently are formerly owned by Allison R. DeRose and Daniel A. Clark, and is owned PD, SBL number 139.12-1-13, this is application number 24Z-0003.
May we have your name and address?
My name's Daniel Clark, and I live at 10 Golden Chain Court.
Soon as he gets done writing, Matt's going to walk you through your...
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Are you nervous now, after seeing the last one?
I would be.
Well, you got letters from your neighbors.
Yeah, all right, so normally people come in here with these variances, and we try to strong-arm them into, trying, trying to say...
Not all of us.
Strong-arm?
Wow, that sounds... I guess push very hard whether that, that variance can be reduced, but I'm going to give you credit, because it's clear from, from the record that you have worked with the town, and you've already negated the need for one variance, and you've discussed and, and moved, and, and I believe reduced the need for the variance that remains, and then you went and got your, your, the letters from your neighbors. So I, I'll commend you on, on all of those things. So I, honestly, I, I don't have many questions, I, this would be, it looks like one, a third shed right within spitting distance of, of this shed, one of the two, one of the sheds looks almost identical with different colors to this shed. The shed itself is within code, so, so, the materials itself, what are the materials going to be?
It's going to be, it's going to have a gravel base to it, for foundation, or I shouldn't say foundation, it's going to sit on a gravel pad, and then it's going to have a vinyl siding that matches the house, and then it's going to have a brown roof that also matches, matches the, the brown roof of the house.
So how, how do you propose that you're going to maintain behind the setback?
Yeah, so, when I moved in, I, there's like arborvitae's that back up to my neighbor's yard, they're actually my neighbor's arborvitae's, and I, originally I thought my property line went like right up to it, but it falls like six feet short of that, so for like the last five years, I've just been taking care of it, and then I have a 24-inch push lawnmower, so, I mean...
It'll fit, so if they, if they put a fence up, it'll still fit?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can push and mow my lawn in 30, 40 minutes, it's a small yard, so...
Chairman, if I could just remind everyone about the use of the microphone?
What if I say no?
But you're not hearing me?
Yeah.
We'll talk later.
And lighting, utilities?
No electric, I'm just using it for storing.
Water?
Nope.
Okay, and, and what are you going to store in there?
Like a grill, lawnmower, patio or deck furniture, bikes, my kid's stuff, like his stroller, things like that.
Okay, and, and why can't you store those things in the garage?
Yep, so right now, we use our garage for storage, it's 312 square feet, we plan on having a second kid, so in the future here, we want to turn that garage into a bedroom, and then we're going to put all the stuff in the garage into the shed out back.
I, I, I have nothing else.
Okay, anybody else on the board have a question?
No, no.
Yeah, it was, it was a good application.
Oh, I thought you meant my questioning.
I was, I was spit into that, geez. Okay, I don't see any e-participation, nor do I see any cue for the call-in, so I'll ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, let's proceed with the environmental review.
All right, I'd make a motion to declare this a type 2 action, requiring no further review?
I'll second that, so we have a motion by Matt to declare it a type 2 action, and I have seconded that, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits?
All right, I'd make a motion to approve this, it's, it, it's not going to be an undesirable change, there's two other sheds, at least two other sheds, right within view of where this shed, and, and again, it's going to look exactly like one of them, perhaps the color's different, and also, there's two letters of support in favor of this application, so clearly, others, neighbors, do not believe that this would be a detriment. It's, you know, I, one thing that we didn't touch on, but what, what was in the, the application, is that, to, to put this in another area within, in the, within the yard, they'd have to take down trees or shrubs, and, and one is a fairly significant pine tree, so, you know, to, to a certain extent, this couldn't be obtained some other way, because, again, it's, it is a small yard, and, and it would essentially be right in the middle of the yard, so I, I understand the need for the application. I, I will say it is substantial, but just with the same as the detrimental, he's taken steps already to reduce the, the variance, he's erased another variance completely, and, and I think he's done a good job of doing that and working with the town on that, and for all the reasons, with a detriment to the neighborhood, it's not going to have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions, and it's self-created, for sure, but I'm not putting any weight into that, so I'd make a motion to approve on those reasons.
Second.
All right, motion approved by Matt for the reasons stated, second by Andres, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You too. And we always save the most difficult for last. Yeah, see, I'm, you're laughing, that's good, that was the point of my comment. All right.
Barbara Crawford, 1995 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580, requests approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1E of the code, to allow the operation of a dog daycare business at 1995 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Fico Properties LLC, and is owned LB, SBL number 093.11-1-14, this is application number 24Z-0004.
Come on up, and while, while the applicant is coming up, I have to tell you, you know, I don't live, folks who know me, I don't live far from where your location's going to be, and I drive down Empire every day, and I've already told you some of this, my wife thinks I'm nuts, but there is a oil change operation on Empire Boulevard, and maybe they're watching now, but they have a sandwich sign, and what does it say? You guys know, because I've complained before.
Welcome to Webster.
Proud to be in Webster, it says. And I actually called, and I, their headquarters, oh, sir, geez, you know, that's embarrassing, We'll have that removed right away. And that was like a month and a half. But just so you know, you, operation if approved will be conducted in the town of Penfield.
Yes.
Despite the fact that he just said Webster.
So for Dan's sake, if this is approved, you have to put a sandwich board out that says...
Don't put a sandwich board out that says glad to be in Webster.
Welcome Webster resident.
So I guess, yeah.
It wasn't in my...
That's okay, to say welcome Webster ends it, it's okay.
You gotta recall seeing a sign for that in the package.
Yeah, so I'll stop in there someday, much to my wife's chagrin. Anyway.
Just go ahead and give us your name and address for record.
Barbara Crawford at 1995 Empire Boulevard.
Excellent, thank you. So let's see, you are currently at the property?
Yeah.
Next door, I guess I'll say you're next door.
I, I've been renting 1995 Empire Boulevard for my grooming son.
Right, well, I guess, same building, but you're on the other side of it.
Yes, and we just, two days ago, three days ago, moved over to the bigger side.
Yep.
So I, I am still paying rent on the smaller side, and so now I'm, I've got the whole building, but I'm still leasing it.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. And there, in the past, there was a dog boarding operation there. That goes back to, I think that saw the board here back in the Carol Mulcahy days of 2016, when this board approved that as well. And it looked like it's very similar, when I looked at the application, it's very similar to what you're going to propose there. It seems like from your application, everything is staying the same, minus you taking your sign from one side, putting in the window on the other, and then eventually putting a new sign up where that existing sign stays.
Right.
But the entrances are going to stay the same. The lighting is going to stay the same.
Yes.
The parking lot's going to stay the same.
Yes.
The fenced-in areas in back, they're going to stay the same. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that...
If I wanted to change the fence in the back and add a fence, do I have to come back here to do that?
I guess I will say, what do you mean by add a fence? You mean increase this fenced-in area?
Well, she has, gosh, I wish I would have taken picture. So the whole fenced-in area is all one big area, and then the back has a white fence going down the center of it. And I just wanted to replace that with a better fence, because it's not a very good...
I would think, I'll leave it to Andy, but I think if you're replacing a pre-existing fence with a, a new fence, as long as it doesn't go higher than what's allowed by code, you don't...
No, it wouldn't go higher.
You don't need to change anything with the town, because there's already a fence there, you're just replacing the existing fence.
Right.
But if you're adding additional fencing elsewhere, then you wouldn't want to come talk to the town.
No, it wouldn't be outside of what's already fenced, and it would be replacing, it's kind of like a half fence, it doesn't even connect.
Yeah, no, I think you'd be fine.
So it's like, I would like to connect it and, you know, have the dogs guided the right way.
Perfect. Yeah, I don't see an issue, as long as you're not changing something that's not already there.
No.
Let me think, anything else? The location's been used for everything in the past that's going to be used for in the I think noxious odors, I think you talked about that it would be cleaned up promptly, you know, stuff doesn't sit out there, and hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and then no overnights of the animals.
Right.
So all that stays the same, basically, is what it was. Perfect. I have no further questions.
Anybody else have any questions? I would just note the prior resolution that Andres referred to from 2017, there's a finding in the potential noise level. It says applicant then had represented to the board that noise would not create a nuisance because dog obedience is a component of the business, and barking at the site would be corrected as part of obedience training. Is that, are you going to do anything similar to kind of keep, to the extent there is barking, kind of keep it under control best you can?
The person that was there before was a trainer.
Right.
I am not a trainer.
Okay.
I will be hiring people that are experienced in doggy daycare and have worked in doggy daycare. I have a few people in mind already. So she had all sizes, she had, you know, any size dog. Mine will be limited to small dogs only, and they will be smaller groups going outside. So the barking is not going to be the loud, big dog barking. They'll be yipping, you know, a little, you know, yee-yah. So I don't think that that would be a nuisance, and it won't go past 7:00 p.m. I mean, I'm thinking, probably close at 6:00.
And what time do you open?
7:00 a.m.
Okay.
So it's not really, you know, 5:00 o'clock in the morning and 10:00 o'clock at night or anything like that, so, and it will be all small dogs.
And how, how many dogs?
I'm thinking at the most it would be as 30.
Yeah, we just, I keep peppering you with questions tonight, Andy, but the, the doggy daycare, we just approved...
The pet resort, the hotel.
Yeah.
Yeah, pet resort.
K9 Resort, that was overnight.
Sounds like 100 dogs.
There was 100 dogs, and there were concerns expressed about barking by at least one adjacent. Yes. So, okay, for consistency's sake, we did approve that one, but, you know, do your best to control any issues that there are. I'm sure you would.
They also had fencing that was designed to reduce...
Yes.
...the noise from barking.
That's true. Okay, that's all I wanted to point out. So any other...
I'm sure there's people calling in about this one.
No. I always go with the wrong cursor, or whatever these things are called.
Mice.
Mice, thank you.
Was that down at, near the bay, that one? On the bay?
No, 250 and 441 generally, a little past that.
Oh, okay, okay.
So no electronic submissions, no call-ins. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay, let's go to the environmental.
Okay, I move this a type 2 action requiring no further review under seeker.
Second.
Motion by Andres under seeker, second by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the merits.
And then the merits, I move to approve this a conditional use. It's very similar to the application we had before, so I'll cite many of those things, but everything's staying the same with the egress, so there are no issues seen with that. Location prior to this use was used for the identical use it is now. For the past eight years, actually, it's been the same. Signage is going to stay the same or similar. Noise levels, if anything, might be reduced because they're smaller dogs. No changes to sight distance, buffering is all going to stay the same. The applicant indicates prop cleanup of potential dog waste, and lighting is going to stay the same, and hours of operation don't seem to be an issue from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Mondays through Friday.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve with the conditions stated. That's by Andres, and a second by George. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome to Penfield. Well, you are here. Okay, any other business? I think we're, that was the last one. Okay, well, very good, then we'll stand adjourned. Thank everybody, as always, for the good work, and we'll see you next month. Thank you.